Excellent. Welcome, we're going to open the August 13th, 2024, planning and zoning meetings without Connecticut. We'll start with pledging allegiance.
Pledging allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The public for which it stands, that it is under God, indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
All right. Go through some introductions, everyone. Start at that on the table.
Eddie Corson, Commissioner.
Mike Kozlowski, Commissioner. Paul Shandley, Chair.
Kitty Grant, Vice Chair.
I am my impression.
Shulgra, Commissioner.
Beth Cagno. Sorry, Bob.
Bob Legnardis, Commissioner, joining us on Zoom. And staff, we have.
Beth Cagno, Director of Planning.
Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Excellent. To remind everyone, any use of personal cell phones up here is not for communicating with each other. It's just for referencing the Google Drive. You're welcome to do it yourself. There's tons of information on there. So we are going to go into a new public hearing. Susan Eck, what was it?
Sierra.
Ms. Sierra.
Yes, it's Sierra. Sierra on the public notice.
Is it correct on the public notice?
Yes, it is. Okay.
All right, good. Here, a special permit dog groomer for 268 Greenwood Ave., would you like to be able to talk about?
Sure, to appear August 2nd and August 9th, 2024, public notice. The Vessel Planning and Development Commission holds a public hearing on August 13th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in Conference Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, South of Connecticut, to hear the following. TRI for a special permit to conduct the dog grooming business at 268 Greenwood Ave., located in the commercial zone. The property can be found in the assessors' records as map 14, lot 10, and lot 1. The public may send comments via regular email and email to landuse@vesselct.gov. Parking for the hearing is located through your building. Paul Shandley, Chair.
That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The reason that the applicant is here this evening and first on the agenda is because under the section of the Rights 4.3, a pet grooming facility requires a special permit, therefore, a public hearing in front of the commission. The applicant's unit is going to be located right next to 268 Greenwood Ave., and it'll be located next to a dog boutique. I call it a dog supply gourmet treat shop within that complex. There is no outdoor. A few people were here prior to the beginning of the meeting asking questions in regards to if there was outdoor kennels and daycare and things of that. Your dog grooming is dog groomed. You let your dog go in. They groom your dog. You pick it up and you bring it home. And then that note, I'd like to turn it over to Sierra.
Hi, I'm Sierra. My sister and I, Courtney, we're looking to open up a grooming salon, help shampoo those.
And I'm her father of Beest Hill, and I'm the contractor doing the slight fit out.
Could you review the fit out with the commissioner if you don't mind?
Thank you.
Yeah, basically, we have shown here two pages. This is the existing condition to the far left of the drawing, which is an empty building, existing handicap, accessible bathroom, existing mechanical. We're adding two division walls for the washing and drying as the dogs are going to be cut in this open area. They like the noise. We're trying to keep the noise away from the dogs so they stay more calm. In addition to that, we'll be adding a half wall along the front of the building. So this will be opened through. Most importantly, we're adding soundproofing on both division walls and the ceiling. We're adding a spray foam with an intensive paint. So we're not only improving the building sound, we're improving the fire capacity of the building. So the foam on the ceilings, fire rated, sound rated, with intensive paints.
Pretty short and sweet, huh? Pretty special on here.
Well, this is just showing the grid with the size. Size of my clothing.
Sounds great.
Any questions?
Are you planning on just having the dogs come in and then have them immediately go?
Oh, no, sorry. I'm good. Does anyone else have any questions? Sure, ma'am, come right up. Do you need your name and address?
Gabriela Hernandez, 114 Nola Drive. It's more of a question of curiosity. For the shampoos and things that you're going to use themselves, are you guys planning to do, you know, eco-friendly type things or what's the protocol for draining and getting rid of the used chemicals? I don't know if that's a question for code or just you guys.
Yeah, most shampoos, there's specifically one shampoo called Environment Groom, and it's made friendly for drainage and piping and for animals as well. But most shampoos, I'd say, aren't eco-friendly. They're meant for drainage.
There's no caustic chemicals.
Right. They're all safe.
Just like regular piping stuff?
In addition, which may or may not be on the drawing in our lease, sorry. The landlord has made us put in a Zern hair drain prior to getting into the Zern CUR. And it's basically just a trap for any hair that doesn't get caught in the normal trap of the tubs.
The property is serviced by sewer and water, city sewers and city water.
Do you guys want these copies?
Yes, two would be sufficient for us.
Is there anyone joining us online that has any questions from the public? Not see anything. You guys have some questions on there?
I just had a question. I've had a dog that I've taken for grooming. Are you not going to have them in cages when they're done, waiting for them?
They're open cages. They won't be crated.
So where are those?
They're like little runs with them. It's going to be behind a reception desk that's next to the wall.
Right here, there'll be three cages.
There might be more, just depends on how many years.
But they'll be open?
Yeah, they'll be open. It's not going to be crated. It's one of the selling features of their tech.
Yeah, I've gone to a grooming for many years.
The drying tables.
The drying tables are here.
Those are not like enclosed where they are nearby themselves.
No, no. So these are open tables where they go on. They're able to raise up and down. The tubs have a ramp that go in with them. These are the two drying areas. We try to keep, they want to isolate this so you don't stimulate the dogs as they're getting groomed.
And then a wall there that line this?
Yeah.
A half wall?
No, these are full. This is a half.
Oh, they have the full wall. So that's in its own private area?
Yeah.
So you have someone in there that's with them as they're drying.
Yeah, we're just going to be with the dog that we're doing at all times. We don't leave them on the table by themselves.
Yeah, they don't, as they come in, as they're going to be cut through this cycle all at once. There's not one just doing that. They do it individually from beginning to end.
Thank you.
Will there be no? Bob, you have any questions?
No questions.
Can you come to the front with your name and address, please?
It's really not about this, but it's up in my daughter's car is the road in front. And it's dead, basically, and I got a tow truck coming and somebody parked in front of me. And I think they might have walked into here, a Sierra pickup truck, by any chance? Nope. Okay, I just wanted to check.
There's a board of finance meeting going on as well.
Check in the front of the building.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
All right, well. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'm going to close this public hearing.
Thank you.
And we will, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will move on.
You can call me in the morning.
Continued public hearing for ACV Realty LLC, 22 Stony Hill Road, Site Plan Special Permit.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two is up first.
Yeah, so. Little flash drive. So for 22 Stony Hill Road, it's a proposed gas station, which was previously intercalated by this commission a number of years back. We've made modifications to that prior approval. We're in receipt of staff comments and we're still working to address them. I don't have much to show, but the developer has updated building elevation. Hearing loud and clear what was being said at the meeting. And they dressed up the building, made it something that's quite a bit nicer than what was previously presented. I mean, there should be a folder there with 22 in it.
I'm trying to pull it up right now for you. Not as fast as David, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. There's a whole bunch of little bits and bites in there, so. In addition to the building elevation, I spoke with staff about the canopy that's being proposed over the dispensers. And that too, we're in the process of making modifications to it. I added the elevation of what was previously approved. I think we'd like something a little more sleek, less obtrusive. The plan that was previously approved had a little.
While we're waiting for that, I just have a, I can just clarify a few little things.
Yeah, sure.
With that, if that's okay with the commission. One is hours of operation. Several residents have approached me in regards to the hours of operation. It's in a 24-hour facility.
We'd love to, my name is Nadim Khalid. We are the property owner. So we'd love to have it 24 hours if it is adequate. So we can do it from 5:00, 5:00 in the morning till like 1:00 AM to 1:00 AM.
Okay. In regards to that, if you do something like that, I think it's very important to work with the town or the department in regards to lighting.
Okay.
Because you are adjacent to a residential area.
Okay.
To the rear and anything you do along the line, lighting could affect adjacent property owners. Secondly, along the same regards with the pumps themselves. Some pumps have the video commercials, you know, that type of thing, any kind of, it's an audio. Again, so if you're going to be open all night or till 1:00 in the morning, audio, we cannot allow audio to.
Absolutely no problem.
Video, audio, I don't know what they call those.
Sometimes they have some splash comes on a pump.
Right.
Or make sure there's no wise behind. There's no recording.
Nothing.
I promise you.
And the reason for that is that I was very happy to see this come in versus what was approved prior to. Because what was approved prior to had a drive-through. And it was the understanding that it was going to be something like a Dunkin' Donuts. And so we would have audio loudspeakers outside. Can I help you? Coffee with two sugars. You would hear the, you know, the exchange of services at the window and things like that that was located to the rear of the property.
That's why we eliminated all the stuff of that.
This is a very much quieter. Right. And also, I did get a chance to review the canopy. Again, with the canopy, everything's underneath. No exterior lighting.
It's going to be only one signage, and I'll give you that drawing. It's going to be just like, but beside that, we are trying to have an admin.
All the lighting is from within the canopy, not going around. Again, because that you are going to have residential.
We'll give you the systematic plan. You have exactly everything.
Okay, very good. And that was off a little bit tonight. I need that to you, Mr. Rubikus.
On the canopy, it's the days of the big dome lights are long since gone. Everything is LED. Everything is tucked into the canopy. So we're just casting lights down.
On the service area.
Yeah, so this is the building elevation that's been prepared for you on the original plan. It was a bit more extreme. This is, I think, a more modest building design with the door centrally located on the property. Just several windows on either side. So it's not going to be a full glass storefront like a lot of the gas stations. It's kind of being respectful of the residential nature that's in and behind and what's being constructed just down the street. So this will be the front facade as you enter into the store. This is the back of the building. To the back, they tried to mimic what's being in the front, a nice dormer. Several windows on the backside. So it's not a big plain face like we had initially. You'll also note on these elevations, we do have positions for signage proposed. So they would be in the front corners as you approach from either direction. Excuse me. This elevation is what you would see from the road itself as you're zipping by. And if you glance over your right shoulder or left shoulder, you'll see this elevation. And of course, this blank elevation is the one to the far back where no one will really drive by see or so on. This is as you would be exiting the site out onto the side road. And I think that, again, the canopy, we're working on modifying that to make it a little more sleek than was previously approved. What was previously approved is a bit, yeah, a little, a bit substantial and kind of awkward looking. And speaking with staff, I think something more in the lines of what's at down the street at Wheels or some other type of canopy. Though we'd like to maybe stick with the traditional, just a band, you know, a metal edging on the canopy. I think in keeping with something similar to this, I think we'll have a little bit of a pitch to it as well to mimic the building, but not.
You don't want it to be overbearing.
Yeah, overshadow. Again, we prefer to have just the typical canopy, as you've noted, or see it as a regular gas station. So as not to draw attention to the canopy itself. Boy, tickle. But that's it for this evening. Like I said, we're working on addressing comments from the review engineer. And we hope to have something back to staff in the next few days. But happy to answer any questions that you might want.
So there's only one entrance and exit in the front. There's no other entrance in the exit, not any other side of the building.
Yeah, just one set of double doors in the front.
Oh, you mean for the structure?
For the structure, yeah.
Yeah, on the original plan, it did have, well, again, plan was previously has a drive-through. And we also had a side entrance, but that's been removed from this. So there'll be just one side door.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the public?
You go first. You have to go first.
Come on up.
Gabriela Hernandez, 114 Nola Drive.
I guess my concern starts with the environmental implications of a gas station on Stony Hill Road. That connects to what I personally think town resources should be more focused on are sustainable options. So being that this is in the already approved process, and I guess they're addressing the concerns, the question that becomes what, as part of the design, can be improved to be made more sustainable, considering solar panels or different things that, you know, the lighting wouldn't impact the neighboring residential area. So, you know, what's it called?
Dark sky.
No pedestrian scale lighting, it's called, meaning it's not overbearing and it's not super high up. It's pedestrian scale. Also, with the, with traditional gas stations, there's usually a curb entrance. So what is the plan for maintaining the sidewalks for them to be compliant with ADA requirements? And what could be done with the rest of the sidewalk? I know Stony Hill has a very choppy, inconsistent sidewalk. So what is the proposal for extending it or connecting it to the surrounding area in terms of sidewalks and having those be walkable? I guess another suggestion to overall, think about where town resources could go is transit development, having the bus stops in the area also adhere to ADA requirements so that they could be accessible at any weather, point in time, or level of mobility. And I know one of the concerns in the Stony Hill area from various residents that I've encountered, and I'm sure you guys have heard, the concerns is the traffic flow in the area. So what is the plan to not hinder the traffic flow that is already a concern for the area residents? Is there going to be traffic lights? And if that's the case, why aren't we adding crosswalks where we need them? So what the plan for addressing those concerns there?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a shot at answering these questions because the majority of them are pertaining to the town itself.
Sure.
And I commend you for some of the questions that you asked. I do have a few answers for you. Number one is probably to start backwards because I have a short memory. As far as bus stops and things of that nature, we are looking at installing ADA pads for those connections and bus shelters. Okay, we're working with West Cargill Regional Planning Agency and with Hart themselves to get some bus shelters out there similar to what we did downtown. Number two, in dealing with crosswalks, we have been a large, a big advocate for crosswalks, especially at the old Hollyville and Route 6 interchange pertaining to sidewalks that we've put in there and the location of the ball fields and the activities that's going on on Route 6. We have been constantly told that it's not a good location for crosswalks by the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation. And it's not something that we are letting go of, and we're constantly pursuing it with any development on Route 6. As far as sidewalks themselves, I very rarely will take credit for anything that happens in the town, but I will for the sidewalks on Route 6 because for the last 24 years, there have been intermittent sidewalks, starting with the Stony Hill Firehouse. And now you are, you will see the connections that have been made in that period of time. Anytime you see a piece of property come in for development, I can guarantee you that this commission is a big proponent of, there will be a sidewalk there connecting to another sidewalk. As far as sustainability, dealing with the project itself and environment and things of that nature, it's standard practice and the applicant has incorporated, gas stations are highly regulated. As far as spills and drips and things of that nature, there's all kinds of preventives from keeping a spill going into our sewer and our water system or doing damage to surrounding properties. As far as lighting, I think you heard my discussion with them as far as lighting. And I don't know what else. I'm sorry.
I think that's the.
But I mean, anything dealing with the project itself, I'm sure Dynas can answer those questions. But Route 6 is tough because it is a state highway. It's not a local highway. Police Department, Police Commission have been big proponents too of crosswalks. At some of our intersections up there, we're all fighting for. And I think the best way that we're going to be accomplishing that is through our state legislature. Reps and senators at this point.
I guess just to inform you guys, you may have seen that as part of the Sustainable Vessel Commission, I organized a walk audit up there and I.
I was away and I wanted to be a part of it. I apologize.
We had a great turnout, actually. About 20 people came, so it was really great. We completed nine whole audits. So the summary report, I can say, is actually finished now. And I hopefully can.
Please forward it to the.
You know, hopefully, I was thinking that I could.
Send it to staff.
Present it to you guys as, because it is a hot topic. It is something that has been ongoing and is something that has grown and sort of the coalescing of the efforts of the volunteers, I think is important to share. So I'll email you guys.
Email staff and we will send it to the group.
Right, and hopefully we can move away from gas stations altogether.
So if I can, Dynas Rubikus, for the record, just to add on to what staff had noted, as part of this proposed development, we do have fully accessible sidewalks running along the entire frontage of the road. We will have lighting as required by the town, the specific globe lights as the entryway to the Stony Hill area. The included with the sidewalks, we will be making modifications also to that intersection of the road, softening the radius between the two roads so that it's easier to negotiate with respect to a turn. And we've been asked by the DOT to provide curb ramps to allow for accessibility to a crosswalk at the point of where the two roads intersect. With respect to environmentally sensitive measures, we have, as stated before, we've changed over to LED lighting. LED lighting uses really less energy than what was previously utilized by any of the other forms of lighting. And, you know, just nerdy stuff. I've noted that there, where you've got traffic signals now that are LED lights, because they're LED lights, they don't warm up as much as the regular lights used to. So now when snow falls on them, sometimes the lighting gets obstructed because there's no snow melt. So part of the efficiency tends to, tends to go the opposite way. But here, it's a good thing and we'll use all LED lighting outdoors in the canopy as well as in the parking area itself. So environmentally, environmentally friendly with that respect. But happy to answer any other questions. I think there was someone else also? Yes.
Thank you.
My concern. Nancy Studen, Two Ridge Two. This is a letter that I wrote to the commission. Happens for everybody, I think, and I'll be doing a copy too. I'm just going to read it because it expresses exactly what I think. And it's regarding the traffic congestion. I'm not opposed to the project in any way, shape, or form. But the traffic congestion, I think, absolutely needs to be addressed. I live close to the area where the gas station is proposed for 22 Stony Hill Road on the corner of Vale Road. Because I'm frequently at that light governing the intersection, I've noticed in the last few years, traffic on Stony Hill has increased exponentially. The original approval for 22 Stony Hill Road was granted long before the new development that's taken place on that road. As a result, that intersection has become a nightmare for people driving either direction on Stony Hill Road who wish to turn left onto Vale Road or left onto Benedict Road. And that's why I put the map there. It's because it's really hard to explain that without you looking at it. If you're heading west or east on Stony Hill Road, you know, heading toward Danbury, that's west, or toward Newtown, that's east, and you want to take a left on either of those intersecting roads, best of luck to you. Because you, more than patience, you take your life in your hands because you end up in a no man's land because there's no way that you've got a car going this way, you've got a car going this way, and neither can go this way because they have to have a crash. It's very dangerous and you have to wait and wait and wait. Benedict and Vale Roads do not line up, and to go from one to the other requires a significant zip that, and I think you all understand that. As a result, frequently cars traveling east and west. As a result, frequently cars traveling east and west on Stony Hill cannot take a left onto either road because of oncoming traffic and both end up in that small space between the two roads. I have been stuck in that no man's land with cars backing up behind me. Because that's the other thing, if you're heading west, it's not two lanes, it's one lane. So cars will back up behind you, you know, until Stony Hill Fire Department or worse. I cannot take a left unless someone lets me in, which never happens. And so I said, I know where to go. When two cars traveling in opposite directions are both stuck in that small space with cars trying to get around them, it's really scary. Please refer to the map below and you might better understand what the problem is. I'm not a traffic pattern engineer, but there may be no quick or easy fix to this. In my opinion, until it is fixed, it's irresponsible to exacerbate the problem by approving a store that is shown to add more traffic to an already under-functioning intersection. To be clear, it's not the convenience store jurisdiction that I object to. It's the problem that will be created by an increase of traffic at a poorly designed intersection that already is problematical. The state DOP bears responsibility for Stony Hill Road, but both Benedict and Vale are town roads. This intersection no longer what it did for so many years prior to the massive buildings that has taken place on Stony Hill Road. Please address this problem before adding to an already unsafe situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people online?
I'm not seeing anyone.
Excellent. Oh, come on out.
Christine Hart, Ed's search drive. My question is, when was this approved, actually, the project? I should know it, but I don't.
The original approval was in 2014. At that time, it had a special permit and an approval for a site plan. Right now, the special permit stands, special permits, we call them special permits. Approvals run with the land. They're recorded in land records. There's no expiration date for that. As far as the site plan, it is a revised site plan showing changes to what was proposed before, which was a drive-through area and things of that nature. So we're looking at it as a revised site plan at this point.
Is there anywhere where you can read up what the reason was to approve the project?
The the original approval, again, it's in what we call, we have a Google Drive, which is available to the public through their computers. And the original approval is in Google Drive.
All right, I'll go and read that.
Okay.
Because I'm against it. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you have any mission questions, Colin? Start down there, Kenny?
This is really, really interesting on the Vale Road Benedict Road issue here. Are there dedicated left and right-hand blinkers in each direction or they just, they don't exist?
I think there might be one if you're heading eastbound.
There.
There is one if you're heading eastbound. If you're heading westbound.
There's not.
Nothing. And that's what really creates
Yeah, that's a state problem. They have the same problem on 30258.
Yes, exactly.
Same problem. It's a good point.
Maybe someday we could ask the state to look at.
Yeah.
I know the state was just out at the intersection across the two months ago and installed the radar cameras. Because the company I work for did it. Radar, I don't know if it increased or did anything. I think their systems are
Blinkers.
Oh, like on a doghouse?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
The light, the arrows.
The arrows, either way, because I live right there as well. And it is, it's all easier going west to Vale. But going, going, going to Benedict. Go, go.
It took 15 years to get the arrows installed at the intersection of Old Hollyville. I mean, Old Hollyville and Route Six.
We almost had a party. Let's have another one.
And then again, is the state of Connecticut?
I do have two other questions. The sidewalks. I was like, does it also go down Vale to impart where the where the exit is on that road?
I wish I had the plan memorized.
I do, I don't remember. That's why I'm asking.
It's basically goes on the both roads, right, starting the front.
It does go, it does go down.
So I think that for the zoning, the first step, that any development happened, they have to have a wall. It is just like a way everybody on a hole. So anybody throughout the area, they create those walls.
I couldn't remember.
No, no, definitely. They're all pretty accessible. And it have all the other ports.
And are they double tanks, the gas tanks?
I'm sorry?
Are the gas tanks double tanks?
Double tanks, that's right.
I thought that was very important and that lady should know.
No, no, that's, that's, I just
Because that's very important.
All the tanks are double wall tanks. You have all the bunch of
I know we did wheels.
That's right.
The double tanks are really important.
That's right.
For environment.
And that's going down Hollyville. I mean,
Down Vale as well.
Down there, yeah.
So just for clarity, sidewalks will be along the entire frontage of both roads.
I was pretty sure of that. Thank you.
Thought as well, but I couldn't.
And I asked him about the double tanks, so.
Yes, so yes, all, all storage tanks will be double wall. Same with the piping.
Everything, they have like at least about a bunch of sand separate lines, pipes. And inside that, they monitorly, they control 24/7. And any issue happen, they shut down the complete facility.
I remember that when we did the wheel station.
That's right.
That people, they were very worried because they had homes back there.
That's right.
And so that is vital importance, I think, for everyone in that area. Thank you for answering that.
Anyhow.
Okay, Paul, I have a question.
Oh, Bob, I'll come.
Go ahead, Sarah. The floor is yours.
The canopy will be a freestanding canopy. It's not attached to the building anyway, right?
No, sir. You're correct, freestanding.
Freestanding, okay. And in regards to the sidewalks, I mean, I know people make fun of it because we put sidewalks in where they go to nowhere. But it's a step in the right direction to have a sidewalk going to nowhere because when we apply for the sidewalk grant, the money goes further because you already have a sidewalk in part of the area and you're trying to connect two other sidewalks. So that's the reason that we need sidewalks every chance we can get, whether they attach to each other or not.
Because, yeah, Bob, you and I worked on this a long time because eventually a lot of those sidewalks did connect.
Yeah.
There's still some that don't, but we're work in progress.
Diane, you have something?
I just looked at some old material and it talked about having to have a quarry and prove it or something.
That's normal. Because they supply the water out there.
Are you selling any cooked food or anything at the convenience store or?
I don't, I don't know what, Nadine, the question is, what, what sort of food might be served, anything prepared or cooked inside the store?
We are planning to have some food, some daily inside. So if that's going to be all that the town approval, whatever the protocol is, the police trap and everything will be between the health department, between the zoning, it will be 100% will follow the protocol.
Yeah.
But as, as, as we are moving forward, we are just have everything pre-packed comes in between the, you know, chips, candy, all that, you know, bread. And that same thing with all the water, juices, all that stuff.
The only other thing was, I noticed that the stormwater is close to the neighbor. And they have a pool or something behind there. I didn't know if that would affect them at all.
No, so we're based on the engineering review comments, we're looking to make modifications to address concern.
And that's the main reason why this, well, Mr. Chairman, you'll probably have to continue this until September 10th meeting in order to receive final comments from our engineer.
Yeah. Cool, do you have anything?
No, no.
I have a few questions. Are you going to sell diesel or just gasoline?
And you're going to sell diesel as well. But just like, it's not like a, like a big trucks and all that. It's just like a mere size truck.
Yeah. And is there a lighting plan done already?
We had submitted a lighting plan, but we're in a process of updating it, correct.
What's the comment? I do appreciate you guys taking into consideration the architectural comments that we made the last time, dressing up the building a little bit.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, that's, you guys went over a lot of information. That's really, really, that's what I had. There's one comment to reiterate what I was talking about before though with that intersection. I work for a company that does contracting in my daily life. And they worked, we worked on this intersection within the last two months, which tells me the state is, it's on their radar. We didn't do a full replacement, but they did change the radars and stuff, so. Not disagreeing with anything that was said as far as traffic, just giving a little bit more information than I, than I knew from my work life, but that's it. So we're going to continue this public hearing to our meeting in September 10th. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We will move to our next continued public hearing, which is NILRA Realty Corp., site plans with a permit at 165 Grassley Plain Street.
Good evening, for the record, Dynas. Professional engineer with our talent engineering, here on behalf of the applicant. And I've been apologizing for the late submission. But we, I'm on my way. We're going to carry these in as well. So I have updated drawings and response letters to comments made by the town engineer or by the hired engineer. And I can submit just a file that's for staff right now and go over things on the screen if you like.
Sure.
Or I can unfold these. However you want. I don't like doing this submitting after the meeting. Just the same.
You want to pass the pile down in case we'll share down here? I just can't see that part.
Diana, so these updated ones on that drive you just gave us?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah, they'll be on the screen.
Oh, so let's start with the site plan set first. So this is the updated site plan for the site. If you can scroll to the drawing after this, that will be the site plan drawing. So for this particular site, we listened to the commission's comments, spoke with staff and have addressed comments made by the review engineer. If I would say the biggest change to the site plan itself, what we did is we incorporated 10, or yeah, 10 additional parking spaces, nine in this location and one more up against the building to provide additional parking as there seemed to be a concern that we might not have enough. So and as you may recall, if you scroll to the next drawing, we did have a deferred parking plan, at which point we had initially proposed the parking along the northern property line as well as these 30 additional spaces. So we had 40 additional spaces that we were keeping in reserve for future, in the event that it was required. But again, having heard, heard the folks loud and clear, we added an additional 10 parking spaces. So now that we've got a total of 32 parking spaces for day in, day out activities, which would include two accessible parking spaces. The deferred parking, we've got another 29 parking spaces, which would bring up, excuse me, another 30 parking spaces, which bring us up to 62 parking spaces. Where 61 would normally be required for, based on the parking regulations. But again, the the estimated amount of employees will not even come close to what is required by the regulations. So again, we've updated that. And in conjunction with that, we updated our landscape plan a little bit. And the other part of the changes to the drawing are things that no one will ever see on a day in, day out. It's all the utilities, the drainage that's underground. There were some comments made about increasing our analysis, if you want to roll to the next drawing. There were comments made about, you know, are the pipes big enough? Is there any drainage? There was some, some backwater that they wanted us to analyze. So we analyzed that. Shifted things around. We increased a bit of storm drainage kind of in this western portion of the site. But everything functions for not only the first flush, but also the 25 year and up to and including the 100 year storm event. So we're not having any increase in rate or off for any of the storm events analyzed. We do have also, if you want to click to, click back to the, to the stick itself. If we go to the architectural renderings at the top.
Great job, Amanda.
Thanks.
Pretty pictures.
Yeah, so the, our client had an architect just render in what this, the building might look like from different directions. This, of course, is heading southward as you approach second lane would be just outside of the picture. That's okay. But the existing building is kind of an orange brick and the proposed building looks to be like a metal metal building. Yeah, but, but and if you scroll through the, through the photos, there are different elevations here. This would be looking northward as you drive along Grassley Plain Street. And I think there's one more elevation. And this one shows kind of where the two buildings would join up along Grassley Plain Street. So again, looking southward. We did submit also a lighting plan as part of the submission. That's in the, in the drive as well. Although the lighting is, it's just a bunch of numbers, so I can't really show you anything but numbers on that. It seems the days of the conqueror lines are long since gone. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks might have regarding this particular development.
There's a question, I'm looking back at my old notes, about sidewalks?
Good point. And we did not address any sidewalks. We didn't, we did not add any. My apologies. I
Who's there? Make an extra? Have you seen other one I have here?
Certainly look to add those. My my bad. I said lighting, building elevations. I missed the sidewalks completely.
One, I think it was the trash.
Yep, so the trash enclosure is located to the rear of the, of the site, also second lane. Kind of out of sight, out of mind.
Beth, do you have something? I was going to open up to the public.
All right. Does anyone hear any questions, comments, concerns? So I'll turn it over to anyone online. Any comments, questions or concerns?
I'm not seeing anyone.
No?
No? All right. Kenny, wanna start down there?
No, looks like a nice improvement and I'm, I'm glad the business is able to expand.
Um, so it's a big green box right now and, and I apologize, I was trying to figure some things out on Zoom here was, what did you? Did you say anything about that, the color or the, the choice of that? I know you just said it was a, the, the addition, the father style building, right?
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a metal building. Uh, does it have to be green? Probably say no, but um, you know.
I, I just know the last time when you're here, before we had architecture runners, it was mentioned that we were, we're looking to tie it into the existing building and, which is fine if we do something completely different. This, again, this is just my opinion. Uh, you know, we have this nice brick old manufacturing building and now we're putting a green metal building next to it. Love to see them tie in a little bit more together if possible. And then also, I understand it's probably mostly warehouse. Uh, but using some daylighting in there, either a clear story translucent or some sort of panels in there. I think would be nice, not just for the people working in there, but aesthetically on the outside, I'll add a little bit to it. Um, and I also be remiss to say, okay, this is the entrance to French Clark Park, kind of our biggest corporate area in town, besides part of Berkshire. Um, so I just want that to be understood, like I, I think it's just gotta be looked at a little bit architecturally.
Okay, so yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing add a little bit of flair to it, something to make it not just a.
You talking about similar color?
Well, I don't know if it's similar color or, or texture, but yours, I don't, you know, this is obviously the first time I just print out red for, yeah, more complimentary. Again, architecturally, everyone's got an opinion architecturally, but that's just mine, but I do echo Kenny's, you know, glad to hear the business is thriving, that they have to expand almost double. Uh, that's awesome here, but love to see a little bit on the architectural side.
I agree, it's a good point. Okay.
I am, I'm done.
Okay.
I agree with them on the architecture.
Okay.
Cool.
I'm worried, yeah, whether it's a Butler building or a Varco proven building, whoever the.
Pre-engineer building type, right?
Right, it's a pre-engineer building, uh, the color choices are almost.
Sure. Yeah, different shades. Uh, just to go back, I don't, you know, I just echo with Paul seven, his daily, daily life, what he does, I do pre-engineer metal buildings and I don't know if it's a single slope back towards the loading docks, that you maybe have a parapet wall in the front facing uh, the main road and a, a larger flat wall facing the entrance, so it looks kind of a little bit more squared off like the main building. Cause you're never really gonna see it from this elevation, right? Uh, just something to think about. I know we try to go with the, the double race sometimes, but even as you know, you're gonna have to collect that storm water. So if you can bring that storm water to one side of the building, it might be a little easier. Okay. From uh, from a site plan perspective.
Um, should I, Nard?
I'm good, I'm good with it, I'm, I'm glad with, like Kenny said, that they're going so well with taking expand the building.
Uh, excellent, and uh, um, I also echo the sentiments of the other commissioners. Um, glad they're expanding uh, in our town and uh, would, I appreciate the updated parking plan. Uh, one question I wanted to know is the exit for trucks exiting. Is there a possibility to put a trucks, trucks exiting only going up left, back into the park and then they come back around to use the traffic light?
Good, good question. Um, just because I can certainly look into that, so again.
I just passed there the other day and there was an eighteen wheeler stuck on second lane there, trying to back into fifty-eight at six-thirty in the morning. Um, it was, I just did one of these, kept going, so uh, I think if we, if we just put trucks exiting must go left, they go up to the intersection in Clark Park there and then back down to the traffic light. Um, it's gonna add two minutes to a trucker's uh, trip, but then he's not stuck on second lane trying to back into.
So it'll make for a safer.
It'll make for a, it'll be, yeah, definitely.
Great suggestion.
And it's just a simple, the trucks, trucks exiting must go left. Um, and just driving trucks coming out onto the second lane is pain, so I always done it once and now I always go to the light. Uh, those big trucks are not fun to drive when you can't see. Uh, we had any other commi- uh, public? Yes.
Yes, um, Gabrielle Hernandez, one fourteen dollar address.
Thank you.
Uh, I think just posing similar questions um, that I posed earlier, the, the sustainable options that could be considered and used. Um, if, if it is in fact a metal box, wouldn't the heating costs be extraordinary over the summers and summers are getting warmer and warmer? So is that something to be considered? I don't know the options. Um, or the alternatives for that type of building material, but that, that's what makes me think about what could be done um, in a more sustainable manner so that the implications of the business are, you know, easy for them to handle on a cost basis, but also just the long term of the building and its life potentially after. Um, and what that impact has on the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and I think the, the sidewalks being idiot inclined again, um, knows things.
So. Can I speak to the building real quick? Cause that's a good question.
Please, please, yeah.
Uh, just cause it's a metal building versus any other material, doesn't really affect, actually the darker color would affect it, but uh, the, the new energy code requires continuous insulation, we still have points and everything else that would create a less efficient building, but they'll have to go through the building department to get that approval and they'll have to show what's called a comp check for uh, energy efficiency and over insulation. So it is gonna be, this part of the building at least, not the existing part will be highly efficient, just it's the nature of the COVID these days.
Great.
And certainly to, to your comments about adding in maybe some kind of panels in the roof, uh, I think that's what you had stated about.
Yeah, clear story or, yeah, you have some daylighting.
So we can bring in the lighting that would lend itself to energy efficiency plus um, with big expansive roofs. Uh, if you have them in a white color, um, reflects the sun back up rather than absorbing the heat. So there's a, there are ways to uh, to work that into the energy efficiency as well.
Excellent. Uh, is there any other public? Question? Beth, are we um, are we waiting for anything on your side?
Yes, we're waiting for final review from uh, Todd Ritchie and the revised drawing.
We're gonna continue this.
There were some engineering things that had to be addressed dealing with um.
Yes, we want, we want to see the sidewalks. On the.
Can we discuss the sidewalks for a minute?
Sure.
Okay, regards to the sidewalks, this is the industrial zone. Um, it is in the farthest section of the town. I think that in regards to this property, there's gonna be some elevation issues as far as making connections at street level with the intersection of and also second line. Um, I believe that there's some elevation issues there. Uh, also in regards to the industrial park, when the industrial park was originally approved, there were sidewalks throughout the whole park.
Yeah.
And the um, uh, the developers of the park, the academic development commission at the time, eliminated the sidewalks in the IP zone. In the industrial zone, which this is part of, there's four parcels along that section of Grassy Plain Street. And I would, I would say that none of them have sidewalks. When you look at where all these connections are made to further on, you're going to the public works garage, you're going into a heavily flood, uh, flood zone area and heading more towards out to the town line and things like that. I can't believe I'm saying this. But in this particular instance, I would um, hesitate to make them do sidewalks without you guys, if you want to go down and do further observations yourself.
Thank you.
All right, uh, with that, I will continue this public hearing. We will, our last meeting will come at ten. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice talk.
Okay. Uh, moving to our business meeting.
Could I just make one comment, Amanda? I did listen to the video of our last meeting.
Okay.
I should have mentioned that earlier.
Uh, has anyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any thoughts? Any reflections?
Do you have any?
Motion passes, yeah. Amanda, they have invoices?
Yes.
Yes.
Six hundred eighty-six dollars and forty cents for the news times.
Correct.
For public noticing.
Correct.
So I have a motion to change.
My commitment, a motion to pay that invoices in the amount of six hundred eighty-six dollars and forty cents for the news times.
Second, second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Uh, I will move into our work session. Um, I have to, um, before we move into a couple items, I want to take a vote. Um, it's not on our agenda, but I'd like to add something to the agenda that I want to vote on, see if we can get that uh, a motion to second. For the last, last meeting, we talked about the TOD adjustments that may or may not have been done back in twenty thirteen, or I'm sorry, uh, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Beth looked into this for us and this the public that brought it to our attention was correct, we discussed it and then never voted on it. Um, that would be reducing the residential units from thirty units per acre to twenty units per acre in the TOD. Um, we did not. So um, in talking to Beth, uh, this was discovered after the agenda had already been posted. Um, so I'd like a, uh, I'd like a motion to add that to our agenda, to our work session, if someone wants to make a motion.
Same.
Uh, and I will second that, so all in favor of adding the uh, the vote for adjusting the TOD regulations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions, motion passes. So uh, let's move into that first before we get onto anything else. Um, I have copies of that for everyone here, you can take one and track it down. And does anyone in the public want to see this?
True.
I do.
We're good over here. You good on that one? Yeah, nevermind.
One more. I'm losing the upper.
Anyone else?
Oh, Gabrielle.
Thanks.
All right. So it's just doing exactly what we uh, talked about during our, we had some uh, public hearings back in May of twenty twenty-three. Um, and we just uh, for somehow, some way, never actually voted on it. Um, and it just reduces the um, residential units and the density in the TOD from thirty units per acre down to twenty units per acre. Um, we had already voted on the uh, maximum height, if I'm correct, we did the height one, right? That was separate from four stories to three stories. Um, and this is just rounding that out. Anyone wanting, uh, is there any questions, discussion?
Well.
Excuse me, one second.
Yeah.
Um, the one thing was the um, uh, also the statement of the underlying zone consists of R ten, double R ten or R O zone. The dimensional standard requirements for a single family home and a two-family home show up. So therefore, if you cannot build a four-story apartment building in an R ten zone, you have to look at the area surrounding it. If it's R ten, you're only allowed two and a half stories, so thirty-five feet. That put that as clarifying.
Excellent. Any other commission? No questions, comments?
This is good.
Um, does anyone want to make a motion to uh, accept these?
I'll make a motion to accept these adjustments to the TOD. A second.
That is the first. Um, all in favor?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Should we read these aloud?
Um, uh, your motion to read basically is.
The top.
As the top, adoption of the following amendments to the TOD with an effective date proposed by the planning and zoning commission of five nine twenty-three. And the reason would be
Yes.
That it's inconformist.
Excellent. Kenny, you got that?
Yeah.
You want to read that out for us?
Sure. Proposed adoption of the following amendments to the transit orientated development zone to take effect eight thirty twenty-four as proposed by planning and zoning commission dated five nine twenty-three. Uh, sections five point one one dash one residential uses, five point.
Eleven.
Eleven.
Dash I.
Yeah. Reducing from thirty units to twenty units per acre.
All right.
We need six A. Do you need to read the six A?
The dimensional six A changed thirty units per acre to twenty units per acre as well.
Okay, so what you're doing is um, adopting, I, I just need clarification.
Yep.
You need, you proposed and adopted, to adopt under section five point one one H dash two dimensional standards in summary table changes pertaining to um, height.
Mm-hmm.
And it was section five point eleven dash I residential uses changing the amount of acreage from thirty to twenty.
Yes.
Exactly, that's correct.
That's correct.
Thirty units to twenty.
Yes. All right, now we have a second, so I'll take a roll if I'll go. Kenny?
Yes, Ken.
Mike, yes.
Kitty, yes. My hand, yes. Yes.
So, Ignard?
Yes.
An IMES, uh, the motion passes unanimously. Excellent, thank you. Um, so back to our regular schoolwork session, we have Chesapeake Animal Health LLC, uh, twenty-five A Turkey Plain Road.
Um. In regards to twenty-five A Turkey Plain Road, Mr. Goodman, uh, revised drawings were submitted and they were reviewed by our engineer. Uh, late this afternoon, I received comments. Um, and everything is uh, has meant to the town of Bethel's engineers satisfactory.
Does anyone have any questions, concerns?
No.
No? Uh, do we have a?
A census for a decision?
For a decision? I think it's, I think it's a yes.
Yes.
I'm in favor of it. Is anyone else opposed to it? Beth, did you?
Amanda.
Yeah, I, yeah.
Did you make copies?
I did.
We have them.
We all have them.
Excellent.
Okay, so should I read this?
Are you gonna make the motions?
Shall I make the amount of time? Site plan and special requirements to allow for in addition to an existing structure containing one thousand eight hundred and seventy square foot footprints. The hospital addition will contain a reception area, animal play area, doctors' offices, and exam room. The approved plans are prepared by our town engineering LLC, dated three twenty-seven twenty-four, the last revised.
Last revised, Dennis. One of the plans last time.
We can get it to us later.
We'll fill in, we'll fill in the date, it's either yesterday or Fri- it was either yesterday or Friday.
Yeah, although the date may be.
Not changed?
July.
No, the original date is July, but you have revision dates. You did, you sent me the plans, I was lucky enough to get them in the file. That's right, I will insert the date, we have it in the record.
Chesapeake Animal Health LLC twenty-five A Turkey Plain Road, can you send them in the assessor's office as map seventeen block twenty-eight and not, not zero six dash two. The following conditions apply, one to five reasons, the commission is careful review of the application and consider that project will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the construction practices.
Bad cut and, that's a bad cut and paste.
Yeah.
To the health, safety, and welfare of residents of the town of Bethel.
Yeah. I, I'm.
That other one is a reason.
Yeah.
Like I said, we, we, together.
Yeah.
Second?
We'll pick a second.
Okay.
We'll call, Tim?
Yes.
Mike, yes.
Yes. My hand, yes.
Yes. So, Ignard?
Yes.
An IMES, welcome to the past unanimously. Um, we move on to. See here, uh.
Yeah.
Good night, everybody. Good night. You wanted.
Special permit dog groomer two sixty-eight Greenwood Avenue.
It's just a simple moment on your part, if you choose to make one.
Does uh, anyone have any questions, comments, concerns? Well, I think it's uh, gonna be a great. Well, I think it's, uh, gonna be a great addition. I'm happy anytime somebody wants to bring a commercial business to our town. Especially one like this, um, I have no, no qualms. Um,
I'd like to make a motion to approve Sierra X, but X.
Next.
Well, she didn't say that. She said it with I pet. But what do you, I'll go with you. Special permit dog groomer two ABC Greenwood Avenue.
Second.
Second. Okay.
Alright. No call vote?
Yes, Kenny.
Mike, yes.
Kitty, yes. My hand, yes.
Spru, yes.
So Ignard?
Yes.
In IMES, uh, so that pa- that motion passes unanimously. Um, moving on to new business, we have Bethel thirty-two Henry LLC, site plan special permit, thirty-two Henry Street.
That's correct. It's a twenty-four hundred square foot addition to an existing industrial building. Uh, formerly known as Shepherd's Warehouse, thirty-two Henry Street. That requires a special permit, uh, of public hearing. So I would request that you schedule a public hearing for September tenth. Please.
So we'll set that, uh, set a public hearing for that and send out all proper notices. We don't motion that.
To acceptance.
I'll make a motion to accept it and, uh, set a public hearing for September tenth, twenty twenty-four, and send out all proper noticing. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Um, you have, we have to acceptance only.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, note for the record, I am accused of the application and so are you.
I will refuse myself for the
At the same time, the commission needs to just make a motion and table the item until their September meeting. Because none of the representative parties could be in attendance to see.
Kenny, I'd like to make a motion to, um, table ten day for eight thirty G affordable housing, six units, nine Putnam Park Road to September tenth.
Correct.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Any opposed? I will abstain. You should have the name.
Now we, that can be voted and accept that and, and table it, right?
We are just making a motion to table the item until the September meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all you're doing is tabling it.
And the motion passes. Um, correspondence, do you have anything?
No.
Um, planners report.
Okay, planners report. Um, we have a request from First Selectman Dan Carter due, uh, to regards to an eight twenty-four referral for Trobridge Drive. I will, is Dan on the, Dan on the call?
I don't see him.
Cause he was gonna try to make it.
Yeah. I don't see him.
But I don't see him here. Okay. So, um, we have a referral. We have an acceptance on, uh, a price for, uh, I believe it's twenty-one Trobridge Drive. Do you remember off the top of your head?
Um, that's what I'm looking for the email right now.
Okay, thank you. I think my phone's over. My phone over there. No?
No.
I don't know.
Nineteen, nineteen Trobridge.
Nineteen.
Nineteen Trobridge in the amount of three hundred and
Uh, why don't you just read the letter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, I'll just read the letter aloud. Um, it was dated August ninth, twenty twenty-four to Paul Family Chair, uh, Beth, Beth planning zoning question. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the town has received an offer of three hundred and thirty thousand for the purchase of nineteen Trobridge Drive with similar contingencies for the sale of the other lots and the expansion of the park. The economic, Economic Development Commission has recommended accepting the offer. I ask the Planning and Zoning Commission, consider the purchase and issue a favorable report as soon as possible, given the timing of the upcoming sale. Sincerely, Dan Carter, First Selectman. So, uh, does anyone have any questions? Comments?
This is one of the new ones at the end, right?
At the end of Trobridge, yeah. They just, uh, did all the clearance development, uh, last year.
He's just asking that you make a motion to do, issue a po- positive report to the board of selectmen on the purchase.
I'll make a motion to issue a positive report.
Second.
Second. Alright, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'm abstaining.
And you're abstaining? Like the same motion passes.
So they can see both.
Uh, we also had on the planners report, I think you have the hometown heroes.
Okay, so, um, similar to the city of Danbury, the town of Bethel is going to be incorporating hometown, a hometown heroes program. And the, I'm looking at Amanda, cause originally Amanda was going to, so this is the actual size.
I, I know.
I'm just kidding.
This is just the, the size.
So this is
They can't see. Sorry. They can't, no, no, they can't see on the
Anyways, so so this is what the actual size of the banner is gonna look like when it goes out on the polls on School Street, right?
Going on School Street?
It's going on School Street.
Oh.
And this, even though this banner is bigger.
Uh-huh. Well.
This is what it's gonna show.
Yep.
Okay, so it's dedication for our our veterans and and service members, and it's just a very, very cool thing.
So it, it, so the idea is gonna change all the thing?
I don't, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
Okay, but this is what they'll look like. Dedication, but, but on that side. Okay?
Nice cooking.
So, um, what we're looking for is a consensus that the board is in favor of this proposal and I assume we might have supported.
Yeah.
Something along those lines.
Do you know where, um, uh, it's just gonna be posted to the public for to be able to buy these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we buy it.
Yeah, you, you sponsor one.
You sponsor it. I looked into it for my dad in Danbury, but now
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So you just, you just pay a fee and then you can like if, uh, give a loved one that's in the military or something.
How many can put up?
I don't know. Uh, I think there's at least twenty, twenty lamp boats out here.
Excellent.
Oh, nice.
So I think it's twenty, seventeen to twenty.
So it's for that.
It could be for, it's for anyone in the service. I don't, you know.
They don't have to.
I don't know what the criteria is. I just know that it has to, it's to, for our service. Past present. I don't know.
Correct.
That particular.
We just do a census. Do you need a, a motion for a positive, uh, review?
Positive review, support. All those kind of things.
Do you want it?
Send it to the board of selectmen?
Yeah. I, I, I think it's a good idea.
Oh, I think so.
Think I'll buy one.
Yeah.
It's in a lot of, a lot of towns.
Yeah.
She got a second.
Very nice. Is there a second?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion that, uh, we'll send a positive report to the board of selectmen. All in favor?
Talking a lot over there.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? And motion passes.
Alright, you gotta go to the planners report in the Google Drive. I put this guy's letter in there, I believe. Um, the last thing I have under my report for, for this month is, um, I received a request in the IP zone. Someone wants to, uh, conduct a, conduct a rental business similar to Durant's with, um, forklifts, rental forklifts, heavy equipment, things of that nature.
What kind?
Subject rental equipment. Um, detailed, I asked him for a description. He wants to have lifts, forklifts, scissor lifts, skid steers, portable generators. Use would be settled to United Rentals. Let me know your thoughts. Get a chance to speak to the commission. Thank you.
Oh, like Durant's.
And industrial park?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dean Clark?
So, as far as that is concerned, in the industrial park, you're gonna, a part of your business can be a retail component.
Uh-huh.
But your whole business cannot be retailing use. So my interpretation of the regulation was that this was a retail establishment with outside storage of the equipment and things of that nature. And therefore, it's not an allowable use within the park.
Oh.
Outside storage is a big thing now, especially in the industrial areas. Um, it's very limited to the town of Bethel now, to the industrial zone exclusively. Uh, you won't see, you know, contractors' yards and things like that in the industrial park. We do not allow full retail use in the industrial park. For example, uh, Bethel Power has the component of a retail showroom. The majority of their business is repair and, um, uh, selling from the storage of their storage and repair of, uh, their equipment and things of that nature. Um, I don't, you know, that was my interpretation of the regulation, but I did invite him to send you guys, you all an email to see if it was something that you would consider. If you would consider something like that, then it would, there would have to be changes made to the, um, IP zone.
Is he doing any service to these equip, these equipment right there?
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure he'll be servicing them.
Yeah, so I, I, uh, I did the, uh, United Rentals business for about five years.
Oh, okay.
And this particular set of equipment is why the United Rental calls a high reach.
Yep.
To be separate from, you know, the one that they have over on Federal Road where you can go and get a chainsaw.
Right, right.
Or sandpaper or whatever. Or when they do the digging. Right? Uh, so they do service the equipment right there. Cause they can't be trucking it back and forth. So there is a service component to to this type of operation.
But it's not the customer's equipment. It's the, their own equipment.
It's their own equipment. The, when it gets returned from the rental.
Yeah, it's gone through.
Then they go
They have to repair and have to clean it.
Reese it.
Right.
Chew it, whatever, in case maybe repair belts, tyke of balls.
With your experience with this, what's your opinion on on a, on a project like this?
I, I would be in favor of it.
I would too.
Let me give you a little caveat to this. Uh, in the news times, in the recent news times, there was Markle out of large rental car facility in the city of Danbury.
Mm-hmm.
Over by the airport.
Where they are.
Where attorney Marcus was quoted as saying, if you don't want it, we'll bring it to Bethel.
Hmm.
That's something to take into consideration if you would do this type. I'm just, I'm not disagreeing with any of you. It is your decision. But it, it's something to take into consideration if you're gonna be allowing this type of use in the industrial parks though. Um, and those type of businesses may wanna also enter. I mean, it's really for discussion purposes. I'd be more than happy to have the gentleman, you know, come in and, and talk to you at the next meeting and
That'd be a good idea.
And, but for discussion purposes, that was my only concern.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, having come in.
Well, I guess where I'm going with that question with Spru and, and asking about the service side of it, his main business is renting it. So, uh, is there a way, kinda like we did with the hotel recently where we really constricted it to just that area with the verbiage of the signage and, you know, how we did that? A way to, to write, if we were entertaining this, a regulation to allow this?
You know what I would do? I, I, this just popped into my head. Um, I would ask, um, I would ask the Economic Development Commission what they think.
Oh.
Because originally they were in charge of the industrial park, so. Um, and at the same time, I will ask, I need to look at you, I apologize. Um, I will ask the Berkshire Industrial Park what their thoughts are along the same lines if we open up our regulations for, uh, rental use.
But Berkshire still has their own right to say
Oh, no.
They view themselves no longer as an industrial.
Well, that's how they view themselves.
Right, and they have the right to refuse.
Right.
They do.
But they are, but they are, but they're both, this proposal would be located in the industrial park zone.
Right.
And that is these two facilities which they fall under. So I think it's only, it's important to get their opinion also. So I will do that and we can talk about it further at our next meeting if you want. I'll have those opinions for you by then.
Good, thank you.
Beth? Beth, I have a comment. In the, uh, Clark Park already, uh, in Hugo Greco's old building, doesn't that guy store and rent refrigerator trailers?
I don't know anything about that.
I don't either.
Which would be similar to this.
I don't know anything about it, Bob. I have nothing. No comment. I, I don't know.
Should be careful about trying to eliminate a business.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, my, my two cents are, I would be in favor of this.
Here.
Very strong, strongly, um. My, uh, I would know this is the first one, two, first meeting, uh, I would go twice in my daily life. What I do for that contractor is I manage their fleet. Um, so we have forty scissor lifts and boom lifts.
Oh, wow.
And skid steers and stuff. So we're talking right up my alley here. You're not talking a lot of noise. You're not talking a lot of waste, um, as far as maintenance goes. Most of the time the scissor lifts, they're all, most of them are electric. Uh, so they're just plugged in.
I'm not, I'm talking about use. So, you know, by, that's all I'm asking every, all of us to think about. Is if you're gonna have allowance for this.
Driving down the road.
Are you gonna have Hertz rent a car? Come in and take over a huge facility to do the repairs and rentals. So it's, it's, it's and, and, you know, and it's just something for all of us to think about and explore a little bit.
Well, I, I think it's the, I'm sorry.
I don't know.
Mind if I jump?
Yeah, please do.
In my opinion, it's an industrial zone and we shouldn't be turning away any industrial use.
Or our associated business to that.
Yeah, I mean, we
But it is a different zone. It is not a strict industrial zone.
I understand that.
Go back to the, and again, go back to the, I think if we all go back to the, but it's an industrial use and what's allowed in the industrial park zone.
Yeah.
I think that it'll, it'll give us, give you all a better
No, and I recognizing the, the, the uses, what I'm, I'm disagreeing with that. I'm saying the, the park itself, those regulations, in my opinion, I'd like to see updated and loosened to allow something to this. Now, do I wanna see, you know, a junkyard around every corner? No. Is there things we could do as far as screening, maybe make, uh, require like, uh, some sort of like, um, pavilion style, like roof, a canopy over them, so they're not just out in the open? Sure, that's, those are all ideas to, to, to have. But if, uh, I would definitely invite this individual in and see what their plans are, cause I, I think, I mean, possibilities are too good to, to look away.
Alright.
In my opinion.
Two questions. Um, is it, I'm just thinking downline, cause I'm kinda with them. I, I'm open to hearing about a business, right? I'm not gonna say no to something like that. But I don't know if I'm as open as Paul is maybe saying he is, which, I just wanna hear a little bit more. And I don't know if it's, you know, if a retail is allowed with an associated use to an industrial purpose or whatever.
Right.
Or a special permit for any retail going into an industrial zone required with strict guidelines for what that could be.
That could be a possibility also.
That's where I might be.
Yeah, that could be a possibility.
And, and what I was getting to before though, you're not gonna see these things driving down the road, is they're gonna be out for delivery. Uh, we, we deliver our scissor lifts, cause we have our own, but United Rentals is the same thing. You, you might see it, you might see a truck coming in and out, which is no different than one of the box truck that's constantly in and out of those, that area.
Right.
So you're gonna see, instead of a box truck, you might see an open trailer that's loaded with, with equipment coming in and out. Um,
Or like Bethel Power has.
Like Bethel Power has.
Mm-hmm.
They have, you know, no one's driving a scissor lift down the road. You're not driving a skid steer down the road, um, unless it's a blizzard and you're going to go clean something. And that's, that's, uh, you know, use style.
Okay.
Um.
But it's a lot.
No, it's
I'll, I'll invite him in. I'll, I'll invite him in.
Yeah.
That's an idea.
Sounds good.
One question, didn't, didn't the board, I'm not sure if, I don't think it was when we were on there, but didn't they have, um. Situation where somebody wanted to have, possibly have cars out there that they were, uh.
Yeah.
Right, but they, but you didn't wanted to have the cars outside at the time, so.
They didn't, the applicant didn't want, they're, they're really high-end sports cars, they don't want them outside.
Okay, but I think we all said we didn't, we didn't want that either.
For the record, I was, uh, uh, in favor of whatever, whatever they want to do. Um, but I think this style is gonna be more open back door. You're not gonna have somebody strolling in saying, well, I don't think I'm gonna rent scissors lift today. Let me go check them out. You're gonna be calling this person saying. I need an X, Y, and Z, I need it delivered.
To schedule it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, and you're not, no one's gonna be browsing down, uh, maybe.
Look at your scissors left?
They'll look, no, no, that's not gonna happen. They're gonna be, either you're showing up with a trailer or something. Yeah.
So there's a, a side item to all of this, which is all of this equipment comes with that property attached.
Sure, for sure.
Mm-hmm.
I definitely, uh.
Look, if they were John Deere Beckos, I'd be talking a different story. Give me a John Deere.
Come on, J L D, Stan Jack, Markle.
Now you're talking. I'm only teasing, but I understand what you're saying and I think it's, it's a good conversation and continue in September.
I'm gonna invite you in on, uh, first meeting.
Yes, yes, we will.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'll be a fun meeting.
No, it won't be.
Okay.
Um.
And that's all I have for you this evening. Yes.
We have any commission comments?
Nope.
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing? Uh, I have something, um. Beth and I have, uh, talked a little bit more about T O D and I know that's a hot button thing. One thing that we wanna, and we're gonna be working on very near future, is updating the, um. The regulations online, because there's been, uh, updates such as the one we just made tonight. And, uh, we made some changes last year and the website, the regulations online don't reflect that. So, so people are misinformed, they might win and think we haven't taken action. Uh, with just the T O D.
I looked online.
So I just wanna make sure that's set out for the public, that, uh, Beth and I toss some ideas around. Uh, we're not done yet, I don't think, um.
I, I'm already starting work on some of them.
There you go, we'll see.
And maps, maps too.
Uh, we didn't bring up maps, but that's the same thing.
Maps is, maps is are being redone.
Yeah, that was, and that was, that was the conversation Beth and I had was. Is that the, the website and the regulations that are just lagging from what changes that we've made.
And that's done by a photographer.
So, I just wanted you to ask the public to know, whoever's listening, uh, that it's being addressed. I'm asking.
I think it's probably important.
Bobby, got anything?
Uh, I, I have something, uh, as we get into studying the C O D or what we're gonna do with the C O D or. Any changes we might wanna look at or information we wanna get from the public. I think we have, what we have to be very careful and aware of is that. A, there's people out there that think if we study the T O D, we're gonna throw it out. If we don't, if, if we don't study the T O D, i- i- if we do study the T O D, it's not working. And, and we, we have to make sure that we're, the general public is aware. That, that we are concerned with some parts of the D O, T O D and to get the information from the public of what they think. But it doesn't necessarily mean that, that, that the T O D is not working or has failed or needs to be totally changed or thrown out. So I, I, I think that, that's the most important thing is that, that we, we can convey to the general public that. We, we are interested in looking at the T O D, we are interested in, in information about the T O D. And what the general public thinks about the T O D. But again, we have to look at, we, we, we spend a lot of money on, on, in place. And we have to make sure that we, we don't just take the attitude, well, let, uh, let's go, go in an entirely different direction. A- a- as we see, uh, meeting after meeting, people are investing in the town because they think that some of the stuff we've done in the past. Is, is the right way to go. A- a- and, and we, we need to keep that positive attitude about. Everything that's going on within the town. Thank you.
Yeah, you're right, but, you know, I, no matter what it is, no matter what parts of regulations, we always have to, every once in a while. Look at them and update them, because everything, everything changes for them.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we need to update, yeah.
We talked about that, about doing like a, a printout, um, for like a, like an addendum if you will. Um, and doing the same kinda thing online, having like a, like a folder of all the changes and then.
All the amendments.
The amendments, sorry. Um, just so, just, cause there have been updates, there, there, there has been changes specifically to the T O D since it was adopted in two thousand sixteen. Significant changes. I think the one we adopted officially is very significant, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was, uh, that was all I had for commission comments. Any Republican, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, I had to talk with Beth, um, because we had got, got an impression from, um. Uh, Mr. Gleason on forty-eight Stony Hill Road, um, the last meeting, and that one building on the right was gonna be three stories. And we had seen, um.
Drawings.
Drawing and showed four, actually, and we were saying, and he's, but he said three, but they were building four.
It is four.
And it is four, so I'm just making that.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking as well in my memory.
Yeah, so that was wrong in, in the last meeting.
Um, any other commission comments for tonight? Any public comments?
Clarification, uh, on the T O D. Nancy Suick to Red Stair Room, am I close to the? What I'd like to clarify is, tonight you passed, uh, you, you passed from thirty. Res, thirty density to twenty density.
Right.
Yes.
Effective eight thirty.
Yes.
I don't know that there isn't, I don't know that there isn't a project on the books right now that is the. That answers my question, thank you very much. That's it.
We, we also.
And let me just explain that. The reason for that is, it was the assumption that, um, the twenty was approved. So anyone that has any, had any discussions with me, I've been saying.
No.
Got it, good, that's great.
And the other, the other change too was the, in a, which is also significant change, just to reiterate, was the, uh, the heights. And so it goes to the underlying zone. So you can't have a apartment building put into a residential neighborhood.
The R ten.
It's four stories.
Um, yeah.
Two stories.
Yeah, well, three stories for everything for commercial and industrial.
Correct.
R ten, R ten, double R ten, it just goes to what, what the underlying zone is.
Correct. Two and a half stories.
Yes. You have something else?
Uh, yeah, you kind of already answered it, but I'm hoping that you guys can give me more information. So I have a better understanding of the, the vote you took tonight in specific to residential. Like family homes. What's the, what's the. I'm thinking about like the state mandate for affordable housing that every town's supposed to. Um, so I, I guess it was just, if you guys could do like a quick, how does that apply and what? What regulations or code have been put into place to help that, you need that?
Let me here, you can take this. Uh, so the regulation you're referring to is eight thirty J, state program.
Hmm.
Um, that supersedes anything that we wanna do. So it, uh, you have to approve it, what, as long as it doesn't impose on the public's health and safety. So that was supersede. What we did is we changed our own regulations for the T O D, the transit oriented development. Uh, which is a layover, a layover zone for generally downtown Bethel. Uh, I think the map is there, I think, is that it?
It's outside the conference room on Paul Bay.
So what we did is we just, we amended our own regulations for Bethel. It doesn't change the T O D, uh, it doesn't change anything to do with eight thirty J. That, that's still, that was still require thirty percent affordable for any application that wants to come in under that regulation.
So, so I'm understanding. The, if I'm a developer and I wanna like make a building, an apartment building, that does meet the thirty percent affordable housing. Mandate. I just have to make sure that it's within the parameters that you guys have already set for that type of zoning.
There's a, that is a loaded question.
Okay, I don't, I don't know how else to ask it, I don't know.
Um, I would recommend for, to get deep into it, call back tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, but, but yeah.
Jesus conversation.
Yeah, that's, uh, it's, there's a lot of ins and outs to that. Uh, but the T O D requires twenty percent. I think we will component to it, so, uh, we're still talking, oh, this is our regulations, not a Connecticut regulation.
Okay.
If that kind of makes sense.
I am better understanding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anytime you have any questions, uh.
Email or call, do what, you know, we'll, we'll give you information and direct you where to look.
I, 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 I'm just.
And you have information I can use too, so please contact me.
If I knew about your site, look, I would love to.
It's sustainable, absolutely.
And that's why I'm thinking about it, because.
We're looking with Catherine.
What, yes, one of the action categories that we did not meet was in fact in affordable housing. We have under ten percent as a count.
We'll never meet them, but that's okay.
So I'm wondering, I don't know if, this is, this is my thought. At what point could we count single family homes somehow towards that number? Is that not ever a possibility, or is that just something that the state like has already decided?
They won't notice. I'm sorry, I have to walk around a little bit.
Again, that's more, that's the, uh, that's the question.
Okay.
Of how the ins and outs of eight, eight thirty G works.
That's best one's pretty to you very well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alright, uh, with that, do I have a motion to close?
Anybody online?
Is anyone online? One, once, twice? I make a motion to close?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
It passes.
Alright, thank you.